Good evening, I'm Renee Lafayette, the moderator. Before we begin this evening's annual meeting, there is first going to be a presentation made last year. Our townsman, Bill Shea, was recognized with the First Citizen of the Year Award. This evening, I invite Mr. Shea to come forward for a presentation.
The mic is on? Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Absolutely.
Hello. My name is Bill Shea. For those of you who know me, you know I am not a man of a few words. But it was about a year ago, almost to the date, that I was sort of enticed to come to the annual town meeting. I'll blame my daughter for that. And it was with a sense of awe and a respect that I was surprised to become the inaugural Citizen of the Year for Hubbardston. It's been a...[62.14][62.14][applause] It's all downhill from here, folks. Yeah, okay. So it's with a sense of sadness and pride that I will be announcing our newest and second Citizen of the Year. It's been a very busy year, you know, in between the kissing the babies and, you know, the bridge openings and cutting the ribbons and things of that nature, you know, the Field Day and... But I somehow managed to fit it in, and I wish our new recipient the very best of luck. And... It's the 50th anniversary for the movie Jaws, by the way. Okay. And for this individual, we're gonna need a bigger plaque.[115.81][115.81][laughter] Okay, good. So here are just some of the accolades of our newly selected Hubbardston Citizen of the Year. Our choice has been a long-term resident of Hubbardston. In fact, I think she remembers Shea's Rebellion.[134.56][134.56][laughter] But no relationship.[138.01][138.01][laughter] Uh-oh, I already said "she," didn't I? So I'm sort of letting a little bit of the cat out of the bag. She has held the vital position of town clerk from 2006 until 2019, and still advises, gives great advice to our current, very capable, town clerk. She currently serves our town on the Board of Registrazes, the Cemetery Commission, and works as an election official within the town. She has been a member of the Hubbardston Historical Society since the 1780s, I mean, 1980s, and is actively working on cataloging Hubbardston's historical artifacts, which is a personal passion project for her. Say that fast 10 times, "personal passion project." Okay. Page 2 of 12, no, page 3. Her work with the Hubbardston Lions Club has earned her the prestigious Melvin Jones Award, and she is an integral part of our very successful annual Field Day each September. And don't forget the famous Green family of singers, right? Okay. Last but by no means least, she is a proud grandmother of two of Hubbardston's youngest citizens, Gus, who is two, and Frank, I love that name, who is nine months old, which ensures the Green legacy will endure for the foreseeable future, and that's a good thing. The accolades could go on and on, but suffice to say that the town has made a fine selection for our new Hubbardston Citizen of the Year. So it's with a sense of pride that I would like to welcome Joyce Green. Let's give her a big hand.[263.44][263.44][applause] Come on up.[265.64][265.64][applause] So how about that? How about that for none such, huh? Huh? Huh?
Wow.
And there's your plaque. So, how about that?
Thank you very much.
There we go. All right. The rest of the meeting will be downhill now.[302.89][302.89][laughter]
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Shea. Ms. Green, congratulations. Okay, so now a couple of housekeeping points before we begin. Tonight's meeting will be videotaped and will be posted on YouTube. If you want to speak to a warrant article or motion, please raise your hand. When recognized, please come forward, step up to the microphone. And this is the format that you'll use. Thank you, Mr. Moderator or Mr. Moderator. My name is, and here, please state your first and your last name and your address, your home address for the record. You'll be invited to proceed, and then please do so. Don't ask direct questions. Address the chair, and then the question will be directed to the appropriate party who will answer it. The counters for tonight's meeting will be Mark Kresge and Rick Green. Gentlemen, thank you both very much. There is one technical point that has been brought to my attention and to share with you, and that is that both the Select Board and the Finance Committee have recommended passage of all of the articles on the warrant. The quorum has been met with 167 voters present, 171 and counting, very good. And on this, at this juncture, just a few thoughts as we prepare to celebrate next year, the 250th anniversary of America's birth. In our current practice of local participatory democracy, we maintain and renew a tradition of self-governance practiced for 400 years. By gathering together this evening, we honor and embrace the town meetings of 250 years ago. They were the local democracies that by their nature taught Americans the virtues and responsibilities of self-government. It's through the conduct of town meetings that the colonial American public embraced the inalienable right of self-determination, independent of the British Empire's control, which in turn sparked a revolt and fueled a revolution. The voices then raised, actions taken, financial support committed, and lives and liberties pledged at many town meetings in the Commonwealth remain our worthy heritage. Through our attendance and participation, we confirm our belief in democracy that in turn gave birth to this constitutional republic. Okay. And at this point, the chair is going to declare this annual town meeting in order. And ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen, please remove your hats unless you are a veteran, in which case you can stay covered and render the hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. There is, as you will note, as far as the warrant is concerned, there is a procedural motion, and that procedural motion is going to be moved by Mr. Williams and seconded by Ms. Young, that the town vote to authorize the moderator to declare any vote requiring a two-thirds vote on a voice vote or show of cards. So this is just a procedural motion, and a majority vote will be required to pass this motion. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please indicate by raising your card. And the motion passes unanimously. Also, for the record, Madam Clerk, Colleen Muhat, the Quabbin Regional Superintendent of Schools has requested and has been granted the right to address town meeting. Okay? Thank you. And now, we now are going to move to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda, the chair is going to read the articles, and then we'll have a motion to consider the consent agenda, and we'll move on from there. So the first article is to choose all necessary officers, the second to hear reports of the town officers and committees and act thereon, the third to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into agreements with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2025, or take any other actions relative thereto. Excuse me. Article four, to see if the town will vote to accept educational grants and aid for fiscal year 2026 to be expended for authorized purposes by the Monticuzo Regional Vocational Technical School in the Quabbin Regional School District, or take any other action relative thereto. Article five, to see if the town will vote to authorize the continuation of the Holden Hospital account, number 2481-000-5780-0000, for fiscal year 2026 to be used for the purposes specified in the trust fund settlement, or take any other action relative thereto. And so now, these are the articles that will be voted on with this motion as far as the consent agenda. And motion is made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Ms. Young. I move that the town take up Articles 1 through 5 under consent agenda. This requires a unanimous vote of town meeting, and if passed, we will then vote on Articles 1 through 5 as a block under a single vote. If anyone objects to any single article being included in the consent agenda, we'll remove that article from the consent agenda and vote on the remaining articles under the consent agenda. Okay? So, motion has been made and seconded. Again, this requires your unanimous consent. All in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your cards. Those opposed, please indicate by raising your card. And the chair sees none opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. The next motion will be to move that the town approve Articles 1 through 5 as printed in the warrant and further authorize the department heads to address town meeting for information purposes. And this motion is also made by Mr. Williams and seconded by Ms. Young. That's the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? The chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the motion passes unanimously. Article six, to see if the town will vote to fix the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2026 beginning on July 1, 2025, for the revolving funds established pursuant to Chapter 4, Section 6 of the Hubbardston General Bylaws for Certain Departments, Boards, and Committees, Agencies, or Officers as follows, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, or take any other action relative thereto. And this is going to require a majority vote. Motion is made by Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Williams on this article. And... I don't think any to read all of them right now. No, we're fine. Okay. So, at this point, let's take a look at this. I move that the town fix the maximum amount that may be spent in fiscal year 2026 beginning July 1, 2025, for the revolving funds established pursuant to Article 4, Section 6 of the Hubbardston General Bylaws for Certain Departments, Boards, Committees, Agencies, or Officers as shown in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as printed in the warrant. Is there any discussion on the article? Any discussion on the article? The chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Chair sees none. Article six passes unanimously. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $453.30 from free cash to pay outstanding invoices from prior fiscal years in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 64, or take any other action relative thereto. And this requires a four-fifths vote. The motion on Article seven is going to be made by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Williams. I move that the town transfer the sum of $453.30 from free cash to pay outstanding invoices from prior fiscal years in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 64. So the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry, ma'am. If you can come forward, please. And now you're going to just turn the microphone back this way, so you're going to be facing us. And if you can please, thank you. If you can just, I'm sorry, if you can just state your name and your home address. So, Mr. Moderator, I am...
Mr. Moderator, Zephany Permiter, 8 High Street.
Thank you.
I just wanted clarity on the second First Citizens invoice. This is duplicate unpaid copier invoice, which is the same as the unpaid copier invoice?
Okay. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mrs. Permiter. I decided at one point that duplicate unpaid copier invoice made sense, but as I'm sitting here right now, I guess it does not, and I appreciate you bringing that up. It is a second month's invoice for that same bill. What happened here was during the transition of executive assistants in the town administrator's office, there were unfortunately a couple of bills that made it over the fiscal year because the transition happened in July of last year. It's unfortunate. It unfortunately happens, and I request that you guys approve it here this evening. I hope that it does not happen again. It usually only happens in periods of transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on the article and on the motion? The chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Please lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And Article seven passes unanimously. Article eight. Article eight. All right. So here, so that you're not going to be hearing my voice longer than you have to. The motion for Article eight is going to be the fiscal year 26 operating budget, and the motion is made by Ms. Young and seconded by Ms. Monroe. Article eight, the motion. I move that the town transfer the sum of $65,000 previously appropriated under Article 16 of the fiscal year 2024 special town meeting for the Center School Boiler Project, which was subsequently covered by a grant, and the balance of $4,524,034.65 be raised and appropriated in the tax levy to meet the salaries and compensation of town employees and town officers as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as well as the expenses and outlays of town departments and other sundry and miscellaneous but regular expenditures necessary for the operation of the town for fiscal year 2026, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, as printed in the warrant at Appendix A, or as printed in the handout for this town meeting, but not including funding for the Monticuzo Regional Vocational Technical School District Assessment or the Quabbin Regional School District Budget and Debt, and further to accept and expend federal and state funds to offset certain salaries, expenses, or outlays. And Article eight's budget is, excuse me, motion is going to be made by Ms. Young and Ms. Monroe. Again, Article eight. Any discussion on the motion? Yes? Fifteen? Okay. Absolutely not. Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Chair hears none. All in favor of Article eight, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And Article eight passes unanimously. Excellent. Okay. And this is attached to the warrant, but just for the record, please note a minor Skrivner's error was identified after final posting. The correct appropriation number for Article nine is $418,566. This figure reflects the actual fiscal year 26 assessment for the town of Hubbardston as provided by the Monticuzo Regional Vocational Technical School District. The motion will be presented with the corrected amount at town meeting. Okay? And thank you for bringing this to our attention. So this is Article nine, and the motion, so as corrected. Okay. So the motion. Article nine is going to be by Mr. Perrigo and seconded by Mr. Walker. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of, now corrected, $418,566 for the Monticuzo Regional Vocational Technical School District Assessment for fiscal year 2026. Is there any discussion on the motion? And the chair hears none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your cards. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And there is one opposed. Thank you. And Article nine passes. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $6,629,173.36 to pay its share of the Quabbin Regional School District Budget for fiscal year 2026, or take any action relative thereto. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $6,629,173.36 to pay its share of the Quabbin Regional School District Budget for fiscal year 2026. And this is Article 10, motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Ms. Young. Any discussion on the motion? All, the chair hears none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And there are 18 opposed. Thank you. You may lower your card. And Article 10 passes. Article 11. Article 11 is going to be as far as the Quabbin Regional School Debt, so to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $55,247 to pay its share of the Quabbin Regional School Debt for fiscal year 2026, or take any action relative thereto. So this is Article 11, motion made by Mrs. Monroe, seconded by Mr. Perrigo, to appropriate the sum of $55,247 to pay its share of the Quabbin Regional School Debt for fiscal year 2026. Is there any discussion on the motion? And the chair hears none. All in favor of Article 11, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And there are three opposed, and Article 11 passes. Article 12. The landfill compliance, to see if the town, to see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from free cash, the sum of $6,130 from free cash for fiscal year 2026 to fund state-mandated landfill testing, the amount of $5,865, and mowing services, $265. These expenses have traditionally been included in the annual budget. Over the past 29 years, approval of this article will ensure continued compliance with state environmental regulations and proper maintenance of the landfill site, or take any other action relative thereto. So this is Article 12, excuse me, motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Williams. I move that the town transfer the sum of $6,130 from free cash for fiscal year 2026 to fund state-mandated landfill testing and mowing services. Any discussion on the article? Any discussion on the article? Okay. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. You may lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the Article, Article 12 passes unanimously. Article 13. And you have, again, the explanation rather than my continues, so I'm just going to, the chair will just read the, the motion. I move that the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 54B, to allow trust funds held in the custody of the town to be invested under the standards of the Massachusetts Prudent Investor Act, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 203C. 203C. And Article 13 is going to be moved by Ms. Young, seconded by Ms. Monroe. Any discussion on the article? Any discussion on the article? Chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower it. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And Article 13 passes unanimously. Article 14. Article 14. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $10,000 from free cash for the purpose of securing grant services to support the application and administration of grants in alignment with the town's established grant priorities. Article 14, motion is made by Mr. Perrigo, seconded by Mr. Walker. Is there any, is there any discussion as far as Article 14? Okay. The chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And Article 14 passes unanimously. Article 15. I move that the town transfer the sum of $30,000 from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund for the purpose of funding salaries, benefits, committee stipends, and other operating and project expenses of the Hubbardston Cable Advisory Committee for fiscal year 2026. Article 15, motion is made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Ms. Young. Any discussion as far as the article? Okay. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. You may lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. I thought we had to hold out. Yes, very good. And one opposed. Thank you. And Article 15 passes. And Article fifteen passes. Article sixteen. Article sixteen. The motion is, I move that the town appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand dollars from the PEG Access Fund for the purpose of relocating PEG broadcast equipment to Forty-Eight Gardner Road and constructing a dedicated meeting and broadcast room, including all related labor, equipment installation, and infrastructure improvements. And again, this is Article sixteen, motion made by Ms. Monroe, seconded by Mr. Perigo. Okay. And is there any discussion as far as the article? Chair here is none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower it. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And there, one, two, three, four. And there are four opposed. Thank you. And Article sixteen passes. Article seventeen. Article seventeen. I move that the town transfer the sum of one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars from free cash, the sum of twenty thousand dollars previously appropriated for the municipal optimization special project under Article four of the November twenty-twenty-four Special Town Meeting, and thirty thousand dollars from the Holden Hospital account to pay for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six capital expenses, including all costs incidental and related thereto as printed in the warrant under Article seventeen. So Article seventeen, motion is made by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion as to the article? Okay. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And there is one opposed, and Article seventeen passes. Article eighteen. Article eighteen. I move that the town appropriate the sum of thirty thousand six hundred thirty dollars from the accrued Community Preservation Act Undesignated Reserve Account to fund the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six debt service obligation for the Rainbows and Playground Improvement Project as previously approved under Article eighteen of the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty Annual Town Meeting. Okay? And this is Article eighteen, motion made by Ms. Young, seconded by Ms. Monroe. Is there any discussion on the article? And the chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And, okay. Yes, no? And Article nineteen passes unanimously. I'm sorry, eighteen. Sorry about that. Not trying to rush. Thank you. Eighteen passes unanimously. Article nineteen. Okay. I move that the town appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Reserve Account and the sum of thirty thousand seven hundred and ten dollars from Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Reserves, for a total of forty thousand seven hundred and ten dollars, to be used to fund the preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration project of the Hubbardston Public Library Basement. So this is Article nineteen, motion made by Mr. Perigo, seconded by Mr. Walker. Article nineteen. Is there any discussion on Article nineteen? The chair here is none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And Article nineteen. There? Oh, okay. Oh, all right. Sorry about that. Got you. Thank you very much. Article nineteen is going to pass. Thank you. Article twenty. Article twenty. I move that the town appropriate a reserve from the Community Preservation Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-six annual revenue, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses to set aside from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenue for later spending for historic resources, community housing, open space, and to set aside funds for the undesignated reserve as printed in the warrant under Article twenty. Article twenty, motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Ms. Young. Article twenty. And is there any, is there any discussion as to the article? Article twenty-one. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Twenty, I'm sorry. Article twenty. Thank you. Thank you. You may lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And Article twenty passes unanimously. Thank you. Article twenty-one. I move that the town authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain a parcel of land with any improvements thereon, known as the First Parish Unitarian Church, located at Two Main Street, Hubbardston, and being the property described in a deed recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds in Book five-two-one-six-four, page eighty-seven, for general municipal purposes, and to accept a deed for said property, and further to authorize the Select Board to enter into a historic preservation restriction on said property, and further to authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements and execute on behalf of the town any and all instruments, as may be necessary or convenient, to carry out the purposes of this article. So this is Article twenty-one, motion made by Ms. Monroe, seconded by Mr. Perigo. Is there any discussion on the article? Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry? Go ahead.
Susan Flag, Nine Over Green Road, Hubbardston. My question is, with the funds that were in the church, that were given for the preservation of the church, there was a lot of people who left money to the church, not to run the church, but to keep it going as far as the structure. And I am curious on how the town is going to handle that. I have, many years ago, gave some money to the town when World Glen Cemetery was no more, and for the first couple of years, they kept it separate. And then all of a sudden, it went in the general funds. And I, this is a much larger sum of money, and it needs to stay in the perpetual care or some type of a separate fund. And it's nothing on the, in the warrant that says that that's going to be. I mean, after two or three years, I don't want the money to disappear. That's what happened last time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hi, Mrs. Flag, how are you? So, there is approximately, and I use approximately lightly because they are still paying some bills, twenty-five thousand dollars that will be gifted by the, from the parish to the town. That does not need to be voted on here this evening. That is a matter that the Select Board can handle as a donation, if the town were to accept the donation of the building this evening. However, those were set up, whether it be in an account, or, like, however it's set up, twenty-five thousand dollars is twenty-five thousand dollars. There is not an appropriation in this budget to run the maintenance of that building. I am anticipating that it'll cost between eighteen and twenty, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, depending on how utilities come in, but that's not going to last us very long. So there's not going to be perpetual funds.
My, my comment on that is, the people left that money for the maintenance of the building. What happened is, years ago, the Methodist Church got ripped down. And I took care of the lady who gave a huge sum of money for it to maintain as a building, not to pay for the heat. So, I, I'm concerned that this money will, you know, you have to depend on the CPA for money to run, for the buildings, but I'm concerned that this money will just go into the whole general funds and accept the taxes. And it shouldn't. That was left with the purpose to maintain the building, not, you know, for roofs and that type of thing, not to be used for general funds. And so that's why I'm asking. And I don't think, from reading, that the selectmen are going to determine that, but I want to make sure that that's-
They will one hundred percent determine that.
That needs to be considered when they're doing it, because it's, that's the way it was left.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Thank you, Mrs. Flag. I know you are educated in this, in this topic, so I appreciate you standing up today. When and if that donation, if we accept it here this evening and that donation is brought forward to the Select Board, I will ensure that those type of details are ironed out with the Select Board and that it is made public that the donation is being discussed at a certain meeting. I don't think we'll have to go as far as a public hearing of sorts, but I will make sure that it is known, so that anybody like yourself that has a interest in having the Select Board say one way or another where exactly certain funds would go and for what, can come and let their voice be heard.
Okay. Because that, that has been a concern of mine from this beginning. I want it to go, but I also want that concern to be addressed.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Zephany Parmiter, Eight High Street. I had a question. I had read the six-page feasibility assessment and managed to get a copy of the nineteen-page ARES preliminary inspection of the building, and just had some questions, and I realize that you may not know the answers to them now, but even if we don't know them now, if we do acquire the building, these would be things that I think some people would have some questions about. I know the six-page report indicated upwards of a million dollars might have to go into the building for restoration efforts, and I know there's discussion of the Community Preservation Funds offsetting some of that. However, is there an estimate of how much might be offset either by that or other grants? Has anybody looked into state or federal?
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, Mr. Administrator.
Do you want to finish all of the questions and then-
Well, no, if it's easier than, yeah, go ahead.
So, long story short, hopefully all, like, I'm hoping that we're really good at getting grants and the town doesn't end up having to pay for this, but obviously, I do not have a magic ball that I can tell what grants will come in. We're going to, should the good people of Hubbardston accept this donation here tonight, we're gonna hit the ground running. We've already taken note of some grants that will be opening in the next few months. Like, it will open a whole new range of possibilities for us that we're looking forward to applying for. Patricia in my office is very, very interested in this project, so that'll be good for her to be able to dig into. I also look forward to building sort of, I don't think it'll be as documented as the Library Board of Trustees, but a sort of impromptu or not-so-impromptu Board of Overseers for this entity that could then kind of guide the ship on where to go and what we want to go do. We do have a pretty staunch grant management policy that states that any grants over ten thousand dollars or with any sort of matching contribution need to be brought to the Select Board prior to approval, so that would be brought up. With the grant prioritization plan that is going to be forthcoming in likely the coming weeks, we will know exactly where on the list different grant opportunities will arise, may arise. The community, the company that's doing that should be presenting it in the next couple of weeks, and I will make sure that that final document is presented to the public. But as you stated, we don't exactly know what is going forward, because six months ago, I did not anticipate us having this conversation here this evening.
So that's my second question. Have you been looking into other grants, but it sounds like you already have a consultant on board to look for grants?
Yes, that was the further article. We do have Capital Strategic Solutions on hand to look at grants. It is a partnership of sorts, because I've already told them in no uncertain terms, hey, I don't want you to get the low-hanging fruit ones. We can find those ourselves. And we have them on retainer, and should they find something, they will call us. Should we find something, we can reach out to them. They offer services in grant applications and in grant management, which sometimes can be the way worse part of the grant management, of the grant process. So I do look forward to working with them. We will see relatively quickly how well that works. I'm hoping the ROI on the ten thousand dollars is something that I can bring to town meeting, at annual town meeting twenty-twenty-six. It's usually pretty quick, because that's how the world of grants work. With the, with the uncertainty of federal funding, not one way or the other, just a new administration, all that, there's a lot of historic-type grants that are kind of in limbo right now, so we will see what, we'll see what happens.
Thank you. And I, I know the ARES report recommends a structural engineer actually do a more concentrated analysis of the building. Has that cost been estimated even back in the envelope for how much it would cost to bring that person on? Okay. And is there been, and again, this is probably not, I'll probably get the same answer, but...
Nope.
Oh, sorry. Is there also an estimated cost for either historic architect or a historic preservation consultant to review the improvements for compliance with state and federal regulations?
Unfortunately, it's going to be either very expensive or very free. So those are the, are the-
Well, if you hire consultants, it's going to be very expensive.
Yeah. So it will be quite expensive. I can get numbers like that. We didn't want to take too much of the working group's time or any staff member's time to dive into too many variables when this could be voted down this evening.
I, I think you do need the variables for the vote, because I, as a historic preservationist for twenty-five years with federal, state, and local government, I can tell you that any cost estimate that comes in always changes. It always balloons, either during inspection, because they find things they were not prepared for and did not estimate, or during construction, and I've been on many of the other end of a, a change order, and it can add up to a lot of money. So that's my concern, is basically, the million that we're estimating now could be a million and a half pretty quickly, so.
Should the town accept this building tonight? I hope that you submit your name for consideration onto the trustee board that will be established. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, so, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Again, Mr. Moderator, first, last name and your address, please.
Rebecca Rector, One Fifteen New Templeton Road. Originally, I had the same question as her when you said eighteen thousand annual maintenance. That sounded very, very low, so now we're hearing a million plus eighteen thousand regular maintenance. But I'll ask a follow-up question. How does preserving it as a historical building limit the use of how it can be used as a public space?
Go ahead, Mr. Administrator.
Currently, it stands, if the only historical preservation is on the outside of the building, so it would not have a significant impact on what we could or could not do inside. The more kind of limiting factor would be such as ADA compliance, the age of the building, the fact that there is two bathrooms, one of them is sort of a bucket. So it's, there's just a, there's a number of issues that would stop us from being able to utilize this property to its fullest extent right away, but it is my hope that the town would be able to gather together and apply for grants and use CPA funding when appropriate accordingly, and just make the best out of a situation. I do not think this is going to be a one, three, or five-year project. This is going to be something that the town is going to be taking care of for a very long time. We are going to look into different feasibility studies, from civic and cultural centers to museums, to feasibility of housing. This is a, this is the start of a project, not something that we necessarily have a price tag on firmly at this time. I, I wish I did, because-
Is ADA part of your estimate?
The ADA is part of our estimate, yes, and I am putting in an ADA grant next week for both Forty-Eight Gardner Road and this building, should the town accept it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Rick Green, Twenty-Five Old Westminster Road. Interesting discussions. I'm speaking on behalf of the feasibility group for the First Meeting House. I was part of the group with Lynn Wilkinson, Ms. Eric Haley, and Mike Stahl, Nate, Peter Walker, and Francois Steiger, and we looked at various aspects that would be of interest to the town, such as, you know, historical aspect, the financial review, did inspections, community engagement concerns, feasibility of building for- community engagement concerns, feasibility of building for public use and stuff. And our conclusion was that the group was unanimously, unanimously in support of this great building. The building's been around for two hundred and fifty years. When, in eighteen hundred, when my house was built, the whole federal budget for the whole country was eight million dollars. And now we have eight million dollars for Quabbin up here. For years, the eighteen thousand dollars to run this building, that included like the choir director and an organ player and the preacher. I mean, it went for years without any infusion of cash. Probably decades would go by with five hundred dollars spent. The building is in excellent shape. It's got a fantastic truss design in the roof. Everything's straight. It's got stone piers under the steeple area and all that. It's truly in fine shape. If you did nothing, it has, the roof was put on six years ago. If you did nothing to the building, it would stand that way for a long time. It's just depends on how much you want to spend, how crazy we want to get coming up to modern requirements. You know, if you don't do anything but sweep it out and clean it out and use it for public space, you can still do that. It's, you know, so... But one of the things was, we noticed it, we were immersed in the history, and the history goes back to like the Minutemen meeting before they went to Bunker Hill in this building and the Chez Rebellion people, which directly promulgated the U.S. Constitution. They were hot and heavy in Hubbardston with Adam, Captain Wheeler. The abolitionist newspaper was written here in town, and they met there twenty years before the Emancipation Proclamation. So, and on and on, town meetings, ham and bean suppers, pageants. It, it all happened here. So we, you know, it's up to us to, to keep the building going, and it's, it's not unreasonable to, to do it. So I, we, we hope you will vote affirmatively for Article 21. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. For the first time, anyone to address the article for the first time? Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ross McDonald, 8 Pine Tree Lane.
Please proceed.
I certainly appreciate all the, all the work that's put into not only considering the opportunity, but as we've just heard, even some of the initial surveys, estimates have been put together. There is an old proverb, not to look a gift horse in the mouth. In this case, I, I think it's a gift horse that we ought to look quite deeply into the mouth. As a town, we're already quite invested into a new project for a municipal complex. It's a little easier to estimate the, the finances involved when you're building and renovating something recent. When you're dealing with something from the eighteenth century, it's a different story. I understand, and I actually am fully sympathetic and in support of maintaining the historical character of Hubbardston. I think we all feel in this room a certain tension of, on the one hand, preserving our historical identity, a sense of place, a sense of community, a sense of heritage and history. On the other hand, we also realize that preserving that comes at a certain cost, and at some level, preservation can become a money pit. It can become a vortex. And as we see our budget heave, we, we read the architectural surveys, and we have that little term frost heaves on the sidewalks heading into that building, and our budget seems to frost heave year by year. I imagine that would be the case for five, ten, twenty-five years to come with this meeting house. But one thing I would point out is simply this. It should not be assumed from reading the reports or the suggestions that the only alternatives are either to preserve the historical character of the First Meeting House circa 1723 or to see it rot or demolished or turned into something other than what it is. The irony of talking about preserving something historical is also preserving its historical use. This was a meeting house, and it was a place of religious worship. That, that, for me, is something very significant. Now, most of the historical buildings in New England were functioned not only as civic spaces, but also as places of religious worship. And in, and in my mind, a lot of these buildings are on the market or facing these kinds of perils. And the reason CPA funds exist to preserve them is because they have declining membership, and they're not able to support themselves. But I would, I would suggest it's a false dichotomy to assume either the town must be on the hook for maintaining a building like this with all of the question marks, with all of the unknown costs. It is an iceberg. As we've heard, it's beautiful from the ground up, but when you go in the basement, it's a different story. The iceberg on top looks relatively nice, but you might be sunk by what you scrape against underneath. But I, at the same time, recognize to preserve the history and the use of a building. I represent a church that meets in a historic building in Barry. That, that would be very interested in a building like that, to actually preserve not only its site and appearance, but actually its function as a place that has a presence in community that's used as a place of religious worship. So we shouldn't assume that to maintain a dinosaur of an, of an edifice needs to be at the expense of the town. It may well be, and I speak as one who would be very interested in this way, that a congregation that's very active, that has half of its membership as residents of Hubbardston, three generations deep, the future of Hubbardston belongs also to its past. And so I think we need to consider, this is not a bye-before-midnight kind of opportunity, and neither should you think that if we don't maintain it, it will be lost forever. There is a alternative way depending on opportunities like this and the willfulness of the parish. But consider the, the third alternative as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for the first time? Yes, sir.
Young Gary Kangus, Chairman of the Hubbardston Historical Commission.
Excuse me, sir. First, last name and address, please, for the record. Sorry about that. Your address.
Gary Kangus, the Chairman of the Hubbardston Historical Commission. Now, the Unitarian Church, that was the town's first meeting house, and the windows on that were...
Okay, sorry, sir. They can't hear you. Yes. Speak into the microphone, please.
Thomas Hubbard, he said, if you name the town after me, I'll provide all the windows for the meeting house. Well, he died before he made good on his promise, but that was a historical significance that he was willing to provide the glass for the town. But the steeple was all repaired and redone in 2008. And within the last five years, I believe, they put a whole new roof on it, so the building is stable. It's not gonna get any worse than it is. And the inside, I looked, it wasn't really that bad. It looks very nice. And I can see, that's one of the three icons that we got left in town between the library and the other church. So there's not too much historical buildings to speak of. But I can see the bottom of that, they use as a, maybe for the Historical Society Museum. But right now, it's upstairs in the library, and it cannot be used for the public because it's not handicapped accessible. So I can see a, a great programs that could be played in that church and preserve it as an icon of the town. That, that's my dream. I would love to see that. So I hope you vote yes on this, and it was used there for the town heritage and beauty for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, just so that everyone can hear, if you can please speak into the microphone. It, it is adjustable, okay? So there we go. Mr. Moderator, first name, last name, home address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Amy Hubbard Hopkinson, 4 Williamsville Road. And I just wanted to come up to address a perspective that may not be considered in this meeting here. I'm thirty-seven years old. I spent my life in this town. My whole family is here, all the way back to the aforementioned Thomas Hubbard, who, you know, the whole window thing, okay. We're here now, and I am here because my life was built by the activities in and around this church. I remember Founder's Day. I remember renting the facility space for Girl Scout events and meetings. I remember 4-H Club meetings there. All of these things are community actions that I value because I got to know people like our Citizen of the Year, Joyce Green, always involved in Girl Scouts and 4-H, and many, many other people, the wonderful people that have been putting their time and energy into this church for many years, have done so not only to facilitate what events we have, but to reach out to the town, to provide community, to provide Christmas events and rummage sales and stuff that happens on the Common and Christmas lights and year-round joy and merry men. And as a thirty-seven-year-old in this community, I just am not seeing as much of those community activities today. And I would like to voice my support for this beautiful, sturdy, historical building that means so much to so many people in town, to be considered as more than just an old meeting house or something, a burden we have to take care of. I want to push the idea that this can be an opportunity for everybody in town to come together more, for people like me to be able to come and enjoy the same space that really shaped my entire life. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that perspective and thank everybody for their attention in this matter. I fully support the gift to the town.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else to address the article for the first time? Gentlemen in the back, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Stahl, 5 Lombard Road.
Please proceed.
Thank you. In reviewing the warrant item, it mentions historic preservation item, restriction. And I was wondering if there's currently a historic preservation restriction on the property? And if it was accepted, will this new historic preservation restriction just mirror the old one? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So I'm speaking with legal counsel. There is a current historic preservation on this building because of the use of CPA funds. I don't believe this would be any different than that current restriction. So I can look into that, should the town accept this building this evening, but it is my opinion, checked in with legal counsel, who is here without a computer or anything this evening, that it would be exactly the same as the current restriction currently held on the outside of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time on the article? Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Lou Gagny, 1 West Road.
Please proceed.
First question. What happens to it if the town doesn't take it?
That would be up to the good people of the First Parish, who are generously offering the building to the community before looking into whatever opportunities may also be out there for them. With the restrictions and the different zoning requirements that one would have to meet, it is going to be a incredibly niche market for that. One of, a member of that market may or may not have spoken up here this evening. And so a important part of this conversation is going to be, does this town want to take this building on as a moral responsibility and obligation to its own history? Or see what the First Parish can, can figure out? Maybe it is something successful, and it rejuvenates the building, and it's wonderful. Or maybe in five years, you're back here with a slightly older historic building in a slightly different situation without $25,000. So the choice is really yours. I, as a professional, will manage whatever situation is presented, but with that, it would be up to the, to the church from tomorrow on, should the town not accept.
And if it was taken on, any monies being spent on it would have to be approved at a Town Hall meeting or special meeting?
Yes, long story short, but it would be part of the either building maintenance line in next year's budget, which will have to go up as this year's did. This year, fortunately, we were able to take the money that we paid to rent 48 Gardner Road and switch it over to a different part of the budget to maintain certain parts of 48 Gardner Road. Unfortunately, this building wouldn't come with a kind of standing amount of money like that, but the town has been doing much more with much less for, for many, many years. If there's one thing I have enjoyed about my time here in Hubbardston is its stone-cold resilience. Like, it doesn't really matter what comes Hubbardston's way. They're gonna deal with it. They know what they are, who they are, and they take what comes. So if that is this, we'll do that as well. Thank you.
Well, I support the town acquiring it. I live at the corner. I look at it every day. I'd love to have the town be the one maintaining it. If it's $18,000 a year to just maintain it, we approve $400,000 school budget, you know, increases every year. I don't think $18,000 is gonna break the bank.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Speaking to the article for the first time. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. My name is Tony Lepore, 4 Ed Clark Road in Hubbardston.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Obviously, in Hubbardston.
Of course.
So my family and I moved into Hubbardston twenty-three years ago from the Boston area. I have a wife and seven kids, and since we've lived here, three of my kids have gotten married, and we now have four children, right? And as Mr. McDonald brought up earlier, in terms of multiple people from Hubbardston worshipping in Barry. Right now, we rent a space in Barry, and we have, in my family, just in my family alone, we have three generations. No religious worship there, me, my kids, and my grandkids. And we rent a space in a municipal building in Barry at this point. We've been doing this for probably, I think, seven or eight years. Before that, we were in Princeton renting a space. I would just like to say that I, I agree for obvious reasons that I love that building. We were just there on Memorial Day, and, and much of our church loves the history in Massachusetts, in New England, and in Hubbardston, and how our forefathers fought for religious freedom. And I agree with Ms. McDonald as well that there aren't just two options here. We've been looking for a church building for about five or six months right now. We're in the process of possibly buying a building in Gardner, Massachusetts, and it seemed to fall through. And I'll be honest, much of the congregation was concerned because most of the people live in Hubbardston and Barry, and we really wanted to be in the community that we all live in and wanted to affect that community and, and be available to that community. So I would just say that, you know, we're looking for a building. We have been established. We've worked with the town of Barry for years now and have had a good relationship with them. And I think we could do the same thing in Hubbardston. We would love to have the opportunity, if the town votes this down, right? Obviously, if the town votes it down, we'd love to have that opportunity to possibly speak with the Unitarian Church about purchasing it. And we do have funds to be able to do improvements to it, depending on what we would get it for and preserve it and work with the town for uses of it as well. So...
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Foley, 12 Pitchville Road.
Please proceed.
I, I took a tour of the building in question a few days ago, excuse me, and it's a beautiful, beautiful space inside. The acoustics are amazing. I believe it is our duty as citizens of Hubbardston to preserve this building, to take ownership of this building, and what I would like to see personally is a building that is dedicated to the community, not only for Boy Scouts. When my kids were going through Boy Scouts, we had to come here to the school or go here, there, or anywhere, sometimes into other towns to have meetings. That would be a beautiful place to have meetings for such. It should be a community center. And I don't know, this idea popped into my head just a moment ago, listening to the gentleman from the, the folks who worship in Barry. If this is a community center, maybe they could use that on Sunday afternoons for their worship because they too are members of the community. And if so, if they feel obligated to donate towards the preservation of the building. I think there's an opportunity... to us to take care of this building. It's right there every day when we drive through or walk through town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else to address the article for the first time? Okay, anyone who would like to address the article, if you have previously spoken? Yes, ma'am?
So, sorry. So, I appreciate, I grew up in this town, and I appreciate the building, the church, and the buildings of this town generally. And 4th of July, I used to recite the Gettysburg Address in front of that church on the common. So, I have a sentimental attachment to it as well, and I am a preservationist. And it kills me to have to say this, but you need to separate, I think, sentiment from the financial reality of what this building may end up costing. And in my experience, you know, you have a preliminary number right now, which could expand greatly, and I don't see a plan for how we're going to pay for that. This doesn't seem to be a sort of emergency situation where somebody's going to come in and knock it down right now. And I'm listening to some of the, you know, other members talk about other churches wanting to come in and actually use the space. I personally would like to see how that plays out. If they want to do that, and they want to negotiate with the church, you know, with the parish church about doing that, I think that would be, from my perspective, that would be the best thing. And then, as you talked about, you know, we may see this again. Maybe it doesn't work out, maybe we see it again. But I'm cautious right now with all the money we're spending on other projects here, and some which we still have to vote on. And now, we're looking at a million dollars being put into this resource. And that's just, again, a preliminary estimate with no engineering, no architectural consultants, and no historic preservationists. And as I said, it will be more than that in the end when this happens.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I feel like I would be remiss not to note, with the utmost respect to Mr. Lepore and Mr. McDonald, thank you for speaking this evening. Why is the first time you're coming to talk about this in front of town meeting? Like, I've been putting out information about this for months. The parish has been looking for assistance for years. And then to have it be in front of a community to accept such a generous offering, whether we know what's going to happen or we don't, that's the question. That's what we're talking about right now. But where were you guys three months ago, or six months ago, or a year ago? And like I said, with the utmost respect, like truly, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Again, Ross McDonald, 8 Pine Tree Lane. I don't know if Tony will reply to you as well. We've been here. I didn't see a for-sale sign on the front lawn by all the monuments. We, as we've said, as a church, have been meeting for a number of years. I think this is our 12th or 13th year as a church. And yeah, we're not here making an offer. We're a church. Our polity is a lot like this town meeting, in some ways, without the blue cards. It really is the will of the congregation in that way. And as you heard from Mr. Lepore, we were looking into a building in Gardner that seemed pretty promising, and we're ready and had a number of meetings, as well as a vote to move forward on that. And another church from a different area was able to move a little bit faster and maneuver some things better than we were able to. And so, a number of months ago, actually, while we were, to use a biblical phrase, casting our bread on many waters, which is a way of saying, looking into several opportunities, when we had just the vision and realized after over a decade of putting away pennies and nickels as a congregation, that now we're at the place that not only did we have some funds that we could actually begin to search, but we had, for the first time, the real need, as we began to fill out the meeting space in Barry. And half of our membership being about waist-high or less, we realized in about 10 years, that's going to be a problem. That's 10 years of more babies and more marriages and a lot more growth, Lord willing. And so, we, at that time, as part of this initial search for an opportunity, had actually come in to inquire about the parish church. And what we were told was, it was being pursued with the town, and you should consider possibly being a renter someday. That was followed up with, even very recently, to say, well, it looks like the town is going to be putting this toward a vote, and if you're really that interested in it as a prospect, you should come and actually let your voice be heard at the town meeting. So, we've been here, and we've been looking in places even beyond here. But as I said, when we cast out our vision at the very beginning of the year, one of the things we laid down was, we want it to be where we are. We believe that we're rooted into this community. We believe in some ways that Barry and Hubbardston are sort of like twin sisters, and about half our church is in one or the other. And so, we said, we want to find a church, or build a church in Hubbardston or Barry. And we've looked into a number of opportunities that were maybe red herrings, or doors that seemed open that then closed, and this may be well one of those. I would just propose to you, maybe you don't have faith in this room tonight, but I would propose to you, you will be taking a step of faith if you take an 18th century building. You've heard a lot about $18,000 a year for a sturdy steel-like building, but I read the eight-page report, I don't know if you did, and I read about the issues with drainage and the state of the foundation. And I also know a little bit about the kind of compliance that ADA and EPA assessments will involve. And I'm also aware, speaking ecclesiastically, of some of the issues that can come with CPA. So, there's a big question mark. And as you said, sir, this will either be very free or very expensive. So, it will be a step of faith for all of us, however the vote goes this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Speaking for the first time, yes, ma'am?
Sarah Nichols, 9 Evergreen Road, Hubbardston, obviously Hubbardston.
Please proceed.
So, I just wanted to kind of address this third option that has appeared. It sounds nice, but it's just confusing the issue. Right now, it's whether the town is going to take it or not. Not this third option that's being thrown out to kind of muddle the decision. Who knows if the current church is agreeable to this third option? I mean, there's so many questions. And to have the third option say, hey, we're here, we're interested in this church, but then also like, ooh, that church is going to cost a lot of money. You read the report about the basement, but you're implying you want it. But you're also saying we shouldn't take it because there's a lot of stuff we might have to pay for. So, if the third option were to take the church, they're going to pay for it? Because they're already just saying, like, it's a lot of money. You know, the town shouldn't get into it. How is this church going to get into it and be able to handle it? So, it just seems like it's just making the issue confusing when it, that's, it's not three options right now. It's either the church stays as it is, or the town accepts it. That's what we're looking at, not some hypothetical maybe sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I hate having my back to people, so there's no way to quite do this. Mr. Moderator, Susan Worth, 66 Root Road.
Please proceed.
Past, present, future. The past, I sense consensus. We all agree, the meeting house is a historic structure. That's the past. The present, there are multi-repurposing things that I've heard tonight, from museum, to meetings, to concerts, Elysium Series. They just, and I've heard that it's a sturdy building, and yet, I've heard other people might want to be interested in it and call it a money pit. So, I'm getting a little bit of mixed messages here. But the bottom line is the future. We do have, as Hubbardston citizens, a CPA. This kind of project aligns perfectly with CPA funds, and those CPA funds are already accrued. So, it's not like we're starting from nothing. There are so many grants out there, and many grants have matching funds. And there, again, CPA can say, oh, $40,000 for that? Well, if we know in advance, it is a timing thing, which gets tricky. But we could help out. So, I can't, well, I'm thrilled that many people are interested in this, but I'm surprised that it's a struggle, because history here in New England is such an integral part of every community, and the meeting house was the hub. And it can be, again, it can be a very dignified place for numerous activities, including other churches perhaps. But, Nate's point is well taken. You know, this has been well advertised. If you're serious about that, well, maybe that's an option in some other form. But I would love to see the voters of Hubbardston put their faith, the size of a mustard seed or however size you want. But I think we should take this step, come up with a plan that's prioritized. We look for grants, and we can make this something really wonderful for the community. So, please consider that.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Andrea Collier. I live at 59 Brigham Street in one of the...
Thank you, you may proceed.
We live in one of the historic homes. Our house was built in 1836 on Brigham Street. I worked for many years in old Sturbridge Village costume, and I learned a lot about Massachusetts and how it was formed and whatever. We would not be a town if it wasn't for that building, because one of the requirements of the, to become a town, it was that you had a meeting house. That was, you could not become a town if you didn't have a meeting house. So, that's us. So, we need this. We need to help and preserve that building, because we wouldn't be here if we hadn't built that building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
Carol Hubbard Kelly, 4 Evergreen Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts.
You may proceed.
This church was built in 1773, the original building. And in the town book, there's a page that has the planning of building it on the high ground next to the old burial ground, and 40 cubits by 40 cubits. And it's been an icon of this town. And it is the look of New England. And every time a barn gets knocked down, or a church gets knocked down, we're changing New England. And we need community space for a million reasons. The acoustics is great. I'm on the parish committee of the church. I got a grand piano from a patient of mine who used to own Allen's Foundry, and it's not a baby grand, it's the smallest grand piano there is. We're donating that as well. We've given the 25-ish thousand dollars, whatever's left after any transfer, if you accept this, to help the town pay for the expenses to get through to the next budget and grant period and everything. And the preservation committee money, barely spends any money on preservation of historic buildings, because we don't have any. Let's not lose the main one, the biggest, most historic building we have. There are only like three other buildings in the state with a similar, you know, beam structure and all that stuff that haven't burned down. And the funding, it's not anything that has to be done right away. We closed it up when our parish was small in the 70s, and then just when our kids got to be young, we wanted Sunday School again, and we opened it up. Our parents closed it down, and we opened it back up, and we've been trying to maintain it. And with the help of the town, the roof that's on there, we just got put on with the help of the town, and that's a 50-year guaranteed roof. It's a spectacular roof. It's a high-tech, really cool roof. And as long as you get a roof, you can take time to fix all the rest of it. It doesn't have to be done right away. A little bit every year. Get the disability things done, so that it can be accessed, and then keep working on it. This is a spectacular building that we cannot lose, the look of our common, to use our common more often as well. And when we were a church, we were open to community usage everywhere, and I don't know why more people didn't come. This other community that needs church space has never talked to us. We have never seen or heard of them. It can be used by a million different reasons. It's just a spectacular building, and we are happy to offer it to the town for it to be used as a community space and one of the original usages that it was built for. Our parish is small, all the old Unitarians are dying. We tried to federate with the Congo, and that worked for a while, and then we had to end that. We've done everything we can think of. And we're all getting older, and we can't physically lug any more boxes or cook any more brownies enough to keep this kind of a building going. This is magical historic. And remember, the clock is owned by the town, and the bell was forged way back when. That's a complication that you guys already own. So, I'm hoping you will accept this generous gift from us, which we came to the decision, very difficult for us.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else to address the article for a first time? Anyone else just to address the article? Yes, sir?
Since I'm feeling laser vision, I'm going to keep this brief. I just want to make one point. I think what everyone in this room agrees with is the preservation of the building. I probably seem like I'm overselling. I say, there's a lot of question marks. That's why I began my first comment with not looking a gift horse in the mouth. I'm happy to have laser vision on me right now. Every year that the budget goes up, I'll take that laser vision again when I remind us. But, one way or the other, I think the building would be preserved. But as you've heard just now, the doors have been open to the community. The community never came. The building's been there, and now it's in need of repairs that the people who had been inside of that building can't actually handle. And it's not just the numbers, but just the capacity, the ability to maintain. So, now the town has to step in to overtake it. We look around the room, we really think that just by the town now keeping those doors open, that that's all of a sudden going to change, that that building is going to be overflowing. We don't necessarily have a vested interest to change where we have been meeting, other than we just need more space. The town taking this over, making it more compliant, that is a little bit bigger, but not by that much of where we are right now. But the difference would be that we would be there every week. The doors would be open throughout the week. It would be a building that would be used, and I would say would have far more sense of purpose and fruitfulness in the community than if it was to become a historical society museum. I'm for it either way. I don't want to see this building be taken down. I'm not here to make a sales pitch. I'm simply here to say, I think what you have seen with the building is what you'll continue to see. It's just going to be coming out of all of our wallet. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back, please?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, Jocelyn DeNine, Cruz Road, Hubbardston, 23 Cruz Road.
Please proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, microphone.
Excuse me, I'm sorry for that. I would like to point out that any discussion about a third party coming into that building now is not even on the table. We should not countenance that. We should not let it affect us tonight. It has absolutely nothing to do with what we're here for tonight. And in my opinion, we all do agree, we have a absolutely beautiful building standing on our town common. That has, the facts are, it's been offered to the town. We are here tonight to decide whether or not we want to accept the building. What we don't know right now is how much it will cost to accept the building. We don't have a full number. I agree with the woman who identified as a preservationist. When she said a million, I'm thinking 2 million, 3 million. It's going to be a big number. Nate has said that we will address that big number the best we can with CPA funds. Nate has said that we will address that big number the best we can with CPA funds. We will look for grants. We will look for public monies. We will look for partnerships. We will do the best we can to bring that big number down to, and manage it over a period of time so that the amount per year is manageable. To, and I assume we would start by stabilizing the envelope and the substructure of the building. From all reports, tonight, the building is in great shape. It has a new roof. We own the steeple. These are all good things. So as we sit here tonight, faced with what we have in front of us, which is the offer of this building to the town, as voters, we should have our eyes wide open. We, Nate will probably be coming back to us for money in the future, to a certain extent. We don't know the extent. And we should vote based on that. And any, anything else is, is off the table right now. It's not even a factor. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Moderator.
Go on.
My name is Paul Flag. I'm also from nine Evergreen Road group over there.
Thank you, proceed, please.
Ever since I kind of crept over the border from Barry to come to Hubbardston. I've done a lot of things in this town past tense, as some people know. And that church has been a centerpiece of this town since I was a kid. I washed dishes in that church. I got married in that church. By the way, I'm not religious in the least. I could care less if people want to use it for a church or don't want to use it for a church. That's their own personal decision. I think from the town's perspective, this is not a religious question of do we want to continue a church or do we not want to continue a church? There's people that have worked in this church for decades trying to keep it going. They've given their heart and soul to the effort. And they've kept it going with not that many people for a long, long time. If you look around, you'll see that most of the churches are dwindling. A lot have failed. Look at the church down the street. What's the story there? That's been here at town meetings as well. I think we're getting badly distracted worrying about this religious issue and maintaining churches or not maintaining churches at the last minute at a town meeting, when there's been a clear reason why it was brought to here a long history. Might some other people, maybe from Barry and Hubbardston, work on an arrangement? Keep this church going? Maybe. Maybe they'll keep it going three or four years, maybe ten years. There's people here that have been working to keep this church going fifty years, and they finally have conceded defeat, I guess is the way to phrase it. And I think that the building offers the opportunity to be a centerpiece for the town in terms of, there's a lot of things that could be done there. I say could because we don't know about a lot of them, whether they can actually be implemented, or if there's even the will within the community for people to implement some of those things. It's not just a question of money to maintain it, to heat it, to paint it, et cetera. If that building's going to succeed, just like when people try to make it succeed as a church, it's going to be depending on all of you, probably actually some small handful of you, who are going to do some work to keep it going and to make it function for the benefit of the rest of the town. And I think you have to look at the question of, do we want to open the door to that possibility for the town? And all of these different things that could be, probably eighty percent are more or never going to pass. But if twenty percent do, that'd be a big plus for the town. There's very few communities that have what could be such a nice community centerpiece with a lot of community activities if the town and the voters, A, want to spend money, and B, in my opinion, even more important than the money, that you, 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 and maybe you over there, actually get your butts up here and do something with the church, which is now going to revert maybe to the town, just like it was the town's first meeting house long ago. It can become the town's centerpiece for many things again. So, I came here, I met a girl, I got married here, I did lots of things in that church. I think there's a lot of space that can be looked into, a lot of things that can be looked into in the town, to, use the nice modern term, repurpose it. Your vote, make up your mind.
Thank you. Mr. Budra, please.
Thank you, thank you. So just to do what I kind of enjoy doing in saying the quiet part out loud, we're, we have some experience in being landlords at this point. So if there is anyone, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Lepore, anyone that wants to talk about mutually beneficial relationships or agreements, I am almost certain that the select board would at the very least consider it. So please don't consider any vote tonight an absolute door open or door closed. I hope that we could have a further discussion either way. So thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Franz Verstager, 65 Hillville Road.
Please proceed.
As a member of the working group, I cherish the fact that we're really hearing a lot of good opinions here. I do feel, however, that at this point in time, a lot of people's opinions have been made, and I move for the question to be taken by...
Thank you. Mr. Tiger moves the previous question. Is there a second duly seconded? All in favor of the previous question, please signify by raising your cards. Previous question is going to be requiring an immediate vote, okay? Thank you, you may lower your cards. Those opposed to the previous question, please signify by raising your card. Previous question is called. All in favor of the motion, this is Article 21. Please signify by raising your card. Thank you, you may lower your card. Though, those, those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Those opposed. The, in the, thank you, you may lower your card. And in the chair's opinion, previous, I think that we have met the, the majority, yes, two-thirds. Okay? So the article passes. At this point, we're now going to look to Article 22. Article 22, I move that the town accept the alteration of the layout of a portion of Williamsville Road as a public way as shown on a plan entitled Existing Layout and Easement Plan of Williamsville Road dated December 11th, 2024, prepared by Greenman Pedersen, Inc., a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the select board to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain any interests in land necessary to accomplish such alteration, including the permanent utility easement shown as parcel P U E dash one, and the temporary construction easements shown as parcel T E dash one and parcel T E dash two, for the purpose of undertaking the Williamsville Road Bridge project. So that is the motion. And Article 22, motion is made by Mr. Walker, signed by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion on the article? Any discussion on the article? Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joshua Harris, eight Williamsville Road Cut Off.
Please proceed.
Why is the eminent domain included in the means of obtaining the easement?
Yes, Mr. Misra.
So this was a very generous five million dollar grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, including engineering. The portion that the town had to handle, because only the town could handle it, was the permanent and temporary taking of these lands. The majority of the land that is in question was conservation land, so it did not need to be brought up in this matter. But two parcels are in need of one permanent and two temporary easements. I believe they are to the scheme of five hundred and seven hundred dollars each. I have met with the landowners several times, and the biggest concern of one of them was, where will I back up my boat? So it is a benefit for the community. It is going to be a little bit of a nuisance to have the road shut down for approximately a year's time. But I think at the end, having the new bridge culvert and widening will be a community benefit, and this is a part of the red tape.
Okay. I consider eminent domain to be a serious threat potentially to one of our most important rights as property owners, the right to actually own our own property and be safe from unlawful seizure. And I don't think that, that decision should be taken lightly. If eminent domain is not necessary, why does, it doesn't sound like it will be. Does it actually need to be included in the article, or could it be amended to remove eminent domain?
Yes, go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For the record, Carolyn Murray, Town Counsel. We always recommend that anytime we're acquiring any property, that we include eminent domain. It doesn't mean that we're actually going to exercise our rights of eminent domain and actually take anybody's property against their will. But it, it prevents us that, in the event that, it allows for, say, a friendly taking, which is what the town administrator has kind of just described to you, but also eminent domain can clear up any title issues that might surface as we're trying to work through the easements. To answer your question, could you strike eminent domain from this article, from the motion? Yes, you could. And if we encounter any title issues, we'll be right back to this town meeting, asking for permission to be able to acquire these easements by eminent domain to address those title issues.
I think it would be more sensible for the town to approve that knowingly at the time that it's realized to be an issue, rather than essentially writing a blank check on, on an important right. So is that something I can move to strike the words eminent domain?
Yeah, in the, the chair's opinion, yes, you may. So that would be an amendment. The, the chair would prefer that that be reduced to writing, but that should be straight, straightforward. You just want to strike the words eminent domain.
Yes, sir. I'll sit down now.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I would just like to point out for the good of the order, I respect his intent very, very much and the sentiment behind it, truly. I don't want to see the community jeopardize a free project for kind of sentiment purposes. So really think about that when you're doing this. We were already up against the wire with the Mass DOT while doing all of this paperwork. The woman from the Right of Way Division is a very nice person, but I heard from her every single day. So they have certain markers that they need to hit, and I would hate to see us lose this opportunity by making changes at last minute. But at the end of the day, it is up to the will of this good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Harris moves an amendment to strike from Article 22, the words eminent domain. And I, and I believe that that's only referenced once. Is there a second to the amendment? And there is a second to the amendment. Now we're going to have debate, discussion on the amendment, on the amendment only. Is there any discussion on the amendment? And the chair sees none. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your card. Thank you, you may lower your card. Those opposed to the amendment, please signify by raising your card. Thank you, and the amendment fails. Back to the article, Article 22. Is there any further discussion on the article? The chair sees done. All in favor of Article 22, please signify by raising your card. Thank you, you may lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Thank you, and Article 22 passes. Article 23, I move that the town appropriate the sum of four hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new fire truck for the fire department. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow set amount under and pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of a proposition two and a half debt exclusion question, allowing the town to raise the funds needed to pay the annual debt service for this project outside the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called. That is the motion. And that motion is made by Ms. Young and signed by Ms. Monroe. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, please come forward.
Yes, sir, Mr. Moderator. My name is Deborah Riley, and I live at 38 Williamsville Road.
Thank you, please proceed.
I have one question, and that is, looking through here, how many Proposition 2 and 1/2 debt exclusions do we have in here?
And the, the chair will refer to...
So there are three. So Proposition 2 and 1/2 is going to go up three times. Is that correct?
To put it very simply, yes, there are three requests this evening to go outside of the parameters of Proposition 2 and 1/2 by means of debt exclusion, so temporary debt, for as long as set by the treasurer and the, through the select board, to take on debt and paid off. It will fall off as soon as the items were paid off, whether that be a five-year, seven, ten, however long. But yes, there are...
So right now, my taxes are going to go up seven and a half percent?
No.
No?
No. Because it is not two and a half, two and a half, two and a half. It's not like a stacked two and a half. It would, that would be a very easier, much easier way to get out of a lot of situations. But no, this is, it's under one million dollars. I don't have the paper right in front of me, but on the summary, I did give roundabout estimates of different housing values and the impact it would have. I believe the lion's share of them was around twenty dollars for a quarter, so between sixty and eighty dollars annually.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else on the article? Any other discussion on the article? All in favor, please, of Article 23, please signify by raising your card. Thank you, please lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Easily, easily. Thank you, you may lower your card. And Article 23 passes. Article 24. Motion, I move that the town appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a used plow truck for the Department of Public Works. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow set amount under and pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of a Proposition 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion question, allowing the town to raise the funds needed to pay the annual debt service for this project outside the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called. So this is Article 24. Motion by Mr. Parego, signed by Mr. Walker. Is there any discussion on the article? Yes, ma'am.
Zephaniah Parmit, 8 High Street. Just a question, the, apparently the truck that's being replaced is, current equipment is aging and unreliable. And the purchase is of a used plow truck, so just get a better understanding... used plow truck, so just get a better understanding of how used and how old this is in relation to the existing truck.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Administrator.
As someone who thought Oshkosh was baby jeans, I am going to take this opportunity to pass it to the director of the DPW, should the moderator allow--
Of course.
--to explain the sentiment behind this project.
If you can just come to the microphone, that'll be great. Thank you.
Travis Brown, DPW Director. So an Oshkosh that we're looking at, we have two right now in the department with using these vehicles. One, they're four-wheel drive. Two, the power plant in them is much larger than one that we would get in a truck that we could afford new. Number two, they are older than what we're currently have, but they're airport trucks, so they're low mileage, 8,000 miles. So the one that we're looking at is a 97. It's an airport truck, 8,000 miles, rust-free. When we get these trucks, excuse me, I'll face you. When we get these trucks, we go through them all, we undercoat everything on them, including inside the chassis, and anytime you can come down, you can see the two that we have now. They're very reliable. We can get the parts. The one that we're replacing is quite rusted. It's a Sterling. They do not make the parts for it anymore, so it's very hard to get parts for them. But they're very reliable. The trucks will last a lot longer than a new one. We don't have any emissions on them. We don't have to deal with the DEF or the electronics that come with the new truck. Buying this truck, saving the town $150,000 to $200,000. So that's why we went this way with the other two that we have. They work out very well for the department, and this is why I put it forth for another one.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the article? Article 24. The chair sees none. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your cards. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Thank you, and Article 24 passes. Article 25. Article 25. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $220,000 for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new brush mower for the Department of Public Works, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided however that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of a Proposition Two and a Half debt exclusion question, allowing the town to raise the funds needed to pay the annual debt service for this project outside the limits of Proposition Two and a Half so-called. So this is Article 25. A motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Ms. Young. Is there any discussion on the article? No discussion on the article. The chair sees none. All in favor of Article 25, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your card, and Article 25 passes. Yes, yes. The chair has just been advised by the town clerk. She would like to clarify something for your additional consideration. Madam Clerk, please do so.
Thank you all. I just wanted to point out that this does not just pass a town meeting. In order for this to fully come to fruition, you need to vote on it at the town election on June 17th. They have to have a yes vote both here and at the town election. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're now looking at Article 26. In Article 26, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding a new Article 23 battery energy storage systems as printed in the planning board handout for this town meeting. Okay. And Article 26, motion is made by Ms. Monroe, signed it by Mr. Pereggo. And, Mr. Monroe, and your backup?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Of course.
Christopher Monroe, Grimes Road, Chair of the Planning Board and here to speak for the Planning Board.
Please proceed.
This battery energy storage bylaw has been a bit of a multi-year fiasco, and the reason for that is because the state has kept putting forward regulation and policy documents to really try to eliminate local control. And as a, as a local government official, the elimination of local control isn't something that makes me super happy, and I'm hoping it's not something that makes the townsfolk super happy, especially with what's going on in some of our neighboring communities. So we had a, we had a last try, well, actually, we had passed a battery energy storage bylaw a few years ago, and it was struck down by the Attorney General's Office. And in the process of striking it down, the Attorney General's Office actually blue-penciled Article 4 of our zoning to make battery energy storage systems allowed by right with no restriction in all zones in Hubbardstown. So this is being offered as a reaction of the planning board to try to bring some local control back by requiring site plans to be submitted to the planning board. We've been working with our town planner, Alec Wade, pretty much since he got here on this one because of all the compliance issues with state law related to it. Since the previous meeting where this was presented, we cleaned up some of the revisions and errors that were in that document that was there to make it more suitable for passage. We actually met with all of, I believe, although I was not at the last meeting, according to Alec and some of my colleagues on the planning board, we've actually met with all of the folks who previously came up and spoke with objection on this. Now, it's important to note for the public that this bylaw regulates grid-scale battery energy storage systems. This does not impose any kind of site plan requirements on a small-scale system you might have in your house. We actually built quite a bit of runway into this for there to be significant growth on the systems that you could have in your house. This bylaw proposal was considered by the planning board on March 20th, April 2nd. April 17th was when the public hearing was opened, and May 7th was when the public hearing was closed, and the board did vote to recommend this.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Any further discussion as far as the article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tim Hawley, 35, Mount Jefferson Road.
Thank you, Mr. Hawley. You may proceed.
I have several questions and concerns, and I don't know if I should raise them one at a time.
The chair is going to suggest, are they going to be to Mr. Monroe in all probability as far as answering? Okay. So one at a time, you're directing them to the chair, and then, Mr. Monroe, if you're so inclined, we'll give you the opportunity to answer. How's that? One at a time?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
The proposed regulation specifies that it applies to batteries that exceed 20 to 70 kilowatt-hours, depending upon the type of battery. And I wonder why unspecified technologies up to 500 kilowatt-hours are also not subject to the regulations. It's a big, seems like a big difference between 20 to 70 and 500.
Okay. Mr. Monroe?
I believe that this question might actually be referring to a difference between the versions on what was heard at the first public hearing versus what is on the floor for the town meeting tonight. In the, in the version that is made available to everyone in the handout by the door, and also made available to anyone in electronic form by scanning the QR code, the restrictions related to specific technologies were removed from the bylaw because of some conversation at the public hearing that the board responded to where making limitations upon specific technologies doesn't make sense in a place where it's evolving so quickly. So that language was actually removed, and the bylaw does not regulate anything that has an energy capacity less than .5 megawatts.
Okay. Mr. Hawley, question two.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Are we legally okay to be discussing this when copies of the bylaws were not sufficient in quantity for all of us here to have them? I'm going by what was posted on the town website as of today.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes. You know, as you know, town meeting, someone could stand up and make a floor amendment, so the fact that it was at least presented in a handout form is perfectly legal.
Even though not everyone has the handout.
Well, as I understand it, was also available by scanning a QR code, or also available either at the town clerk's office or via the town's website. And as you've heard from the planning board chair, there's been sort of a, you know, an overview given of what the intent of the article is, and as long as the amendments stay within the scope of that article, town meeting may vote on it.
Okay. I'm going what is currently posted on the town website. It has a number of different specifics about the kilowatt-hours. The bylaw does not say anything about stationary battery energy storage systems, so is Ford Lightning required to have site plan review?
Mr. Monroe?
The issue was, was addressed in the, the public hearings, which is part of why the change to the .5 megawatt-hours was set as the floor for it. That is a lot of capacity. There are no EVs on the road that are currently storing 500 kilowatts of energy and won't be at any point in the near future. I also would add that, that this has gone through a significant legal and planning review, and at the same time, the state has also passed a new law that is going to create new regulations that, that will allow more control to be taken out of the local organizations. So this is our last chance to try to pass it, and even if we do pass it, there's, there's a good chance the Attorney General is going to try to pare it down and take more control out of our hands.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley?
Yeah, this is, reveals my ignorance, Mr. Moderator, about regulations in general. Section 2, again, the version that's on the website, refers to small batteries that are exempt, but Section 3 says all battery energy systems are subject to various requirements. So I'm not sure how to interpret that, if somebody can help me.
Thank you. Mr. Monroe?
The specific reference with the change in Section 2 to 3 now reads that all battery energy storage systems, all dedicated use buildings, and all other buildings or structures that contain or are otherwise associated with a battery energy storage system, and subject to the requirements of the State Building Code, shall be designated, erected, and installed in accordance with all applicable provisions of the Building Code. It then goes on to cite the specific references to the Building Code and then the standards for fire protection. So these are requirements that call to all projects, and we're just making it clear in that section of the bylaw that if you're building a battery energy storage system, even if it is below the threshold where it requires a site plan review, you're still required to follow the Building Code and the Fire Code and get these things inspected.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, referring to what's online, Section 4 states that Tier 1 is allowed by right but are subject to site plan review. Is that the way Section 4 still reads?
Mr. Monroe?
Section 4, as presented in the handout and online, and as was previously made available at the town offices, now reads permitting requirements for Tier 1 battery energy storage systems. Tier 1 battery energy storage systems are allowed by right in all zoning districts, subject to applicable provisions of the State Building Code, Electrical Code, Fire Code, and other applicable codes. It does not contain a site, a site review. I would also like to note for the benefit of the public that site plan reviews ultimately just allow a negotiation between the planning board and somebody who is building a new property or a, a site plan required use. It doesn't necessarily give the planning board the ability to deny a site plan review. We don't really have a discretion on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've just been handed a copy of the handout for tonight. And I'm happy to say that I think my questions have been addressed in the handout. Thank you very much, and thank you to the planning board.
Of course. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Any further discussion as--
Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry, yes?
For the good of the order, I'd just like to put it out there that there were, in addition to the reverse 911, several emails availability at town hall, 200 copies. I went and picked them up at Staples. 200 copies were made available here. With 179 people being here in the beginning, I rebuke Mr. Hawley's sentiment that there were not enough copies made for everyone in attendance. Therefore, there were. So, thank you.
Okay. Any further, yes, sir?
Mr. Moderator, Robert Fabindes, 148 New Westminster Road. My wife and I spoke last year at the town meeting against this, and I have attended planning board meetings and viewed ones online that I couldn't attend. Sorry, I just got a frog in my throat. To my understanding is, if we don't vote this forward, anybody can build one of these without any regulation. So we need to have something in place, such as this, with some sort of regulation, so that we know where they're going in town, other than the building inspector and the electoral inspector, some sort of regulation. So that's what this is stating. This isn't stating, "Come on in, put your big batteries in our backyard." This is just some kind of basis of regulation that we have a little bit of control on the town level still. So, that's all I'd say at that.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion as far as the article? The chair, here is none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower them. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card, and Article 26 passes unanimously. Article 27. Article 27. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by deleting the existing Article 24 in its entirety and inserting a new Article 24 accessory dwelling units as printed in the planning board handout for this town meeting. This is Article 27. Article 27 moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mr. Williams. Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Monroe, Grimes Road, Chair of the Planning Board. What is presented in the packet here is a fine example of more work being required to have far fewer words. And the reason for that is, we a few years ago actually passed a ADU-enabling bylaw-- And the reason for that is, we a few years ago actually passed a ADU-enabling bylaw. It was one of the first ones in the state, and it was one of the most enabling ones. It was really set up for the purpose of promoting them and minimizing the amount of restrictions that were on them. The state, it passed as one of the most popular zoning amendments that we've ever put forward. It passed with only three votes. The state, in its wisdom since then, has passed a series of statutes that have worked to take more control, and that's a theme that we're going to have when we're talking about the state here. They've passed more regulations that have eroded the home rule, that that's a principle that we can set around zoning. And this is one of those cases where they've said, "Well, you pretty much have to pass this." So we have taken the ADU bylaw as we had it and then pared it down pretty much as much as possible and have since sent it through legal review. This one had a lot of work done on it by our town planner, Alec Wade, who also had the opportunity to send this in for pre-review. There are a couple places where our zoning, where what we are proposing here varies from what the state sets as the minimum. So the state requires that ADU size be 900 feet or half the size of the house. We wrote into our bylaw 1,000 square feet or half the size of the house. So we actually exceed the state minimum on this. But primarily, this is a reaction to the Affordable Homes Act from 2024. Regulations weren't offered on this until earlier this year, which is why on this one we weren't able to have finalized language until shortly before the meeting because we needed to get that language. But we've been working on this since September and have presented several drafts to the public. This was specifically considered at our meetings as presented on October 2nd, 2024, November 21st, 2024, January 16th, 2025, March 20th, 2025, April 2nd. April 17th was when the public hearing was open, and then May 7th was when the public hearing was closed and the Planning Board voted to recommend it.
Thank you. Any discussion as far as Article 27? The chair sees none. All in favor of Article 27, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your card. Those opposed, signify by raising your card. And Article 27 passes unanimously. Article 28. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding a new Article 13 floodplain district as printed in the planning board handout for this town meeting. Article 28, motion by Ms. Young, seconded by Ms. Monroe. Discussion. Mr. Monroe, please.
Christopher Monroe, Chair of the Planning Board, Grimes Road, speaking to get the report of the Planning Board. In 2020, the Department of Conservation and Recreation published a model floodplain bylaw. And in this bylaw, there are portions that we are required to adopt or comply with in order to be compliant with both the state and the national standards. Hubbardston has historically had a floodplain bylaw. The part that's meaningful here to our residents is if we do not have a bylaw that complies, it can trigger a 25% increase in folks that have to purchase flood insurance. And there are some folks in the town that are affected by that. We did go through and pull out some language in the model bylaw that we thought was more restrictive than necessary or otherwise created some challenges related to enforcement. Unfortunately, with this bylaw, because it's based on a model and because it is subject to compliance with that model in order to satisfy the insurance requirements, there's not really a lot that we can change and rewrite about this. I would like to thank the Administrative Services Coordinator, Leanne, for her work on this because she spent a lot of time going through all the different models, going through the floodplain map and making it so we could present something that complied. The Planning Board did talk about this at their March 20th meeting, April 2nd meeting, April 17th meeting, and on May 7th, the public hearing was held and closed, and the Planning Board voted to support it.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion as far as Article 28? The chair sees none. All in favor of Article 28, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And Article 28 passes unanimously. Article 29, Site Plan Review. I move that the town vote to amend its zoning bylaws by amending Article 9 Site Plan Approval as printed in the planning board handout to this town meeting. And Article 29, motion made by Mr. Peregum, seconded by Mr. Walker. Thank you. Gentlemen, Mr. Monroe, under discussion.
Christopher Monroe, Grimes Road, Chair of the Planning Board, speaking to deliver the report of the Planning Board. Although this on its face is probably the most boring proposal that we have in the zoning here, and that's saying something against the floodplain district, this is actually something that's really important for setting us up in the future. The way our site plan bylaw currently works is if we make small changes to the requirements of the form, we have to bring it to town meeting. We are currently working towards moving our process towards one that is electronic, which is fairly heavily favored by the applicants because there are significant printing costs that go along with having to deliver eight copies of everything, including the full-scale plans. We do still sometimes ask for it where it's appropriate, but this is going to allow us to make some changes to our application through administrative rules instead of having to come to town meeting anytime we want to change in electronic form. Excuse me. This was recommended to us by the town planner, Alec Wade, excuse me, as a process that has been adopted by many of our peer communities for process improvement. The existing Site Plan Approval bylaw as it is provides a limited amount of detail to the applicant. By taking some of those details related to the application and moving them into the administrative rules instead of the bylaws, it's going to present an opportunity where we can go into much more depth about timelines, about forms of application, about other things that should be specified within it, without having to come to town meeting every single time and make you guys stay here till 11 o'clock. So a draft of these rules and regulations have been provided. This version has been out for a while. There's only been minor tweaks to it from legal review. It was first considered by the Planning Board on November 6, 2024, then at the November 21st meeting, 2024, then January 16th of this year, March 20th of this year, April 2nd of this year, April 17th of this year, and then on May 7th, the public hearing was held. The Planning Board then closed the public hearing after receiving testimony and voted to support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion as far as Article 29?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Laura Foley, and I live at 12 Pitcherville Road.
Please proceed.
First, two apologies. One, I'm sorry to be that lady who's keeping us late. I'll try to keep this brief. And secondly, I hope that I am working off the most current copy of this document. And this is definitely going to be-- These are questions for Mr. Monroe. There are two. The Section 9.8 reads, "In its decision, the Planning Board may reserve the power to amend the terms and conditions of a decision on application of the owner, lessee, or mortgagie. All provisions of this Section 9 shall apply to any modification or amendment." Similarly, Section 9.11, 9.11, "The Planning Board may periodically adopt or amend rules and regulations for the implementation of this Section 9 by majority vote of the board." To me, this reads as though the Planning Board is going to have the ability to change the terms of a contract that an applicant has entered into, or rather, to change the terms without the input of that applicant. So I was wondering if Mr. Monroe could speak a little bit about that.
Thank you. Ms. Foley? Mr. Monroe?
I'm sorry. What were the specific sections that were referenced there?
9.8 and 9.11?
9.8 is, "In its decision, the Planning Board may reserve the power to amend the terms and conditions of the decision on application of the owner, lessee, or mortgagie." That, how I read that section, is that the Planning Board may reserve the power, the terms and conditions on application. I'd look to Town Council just for clarification on that.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think the Chair of the Planning Board was starting to hit upon the key language in Section 9.8 is "on application of the owner, lessee, or mortgagie." In other words, the Planning Board does not have unilateral authority to decide to amend someone's site plan review. It would have to be initiated by the property owner or the lessee and bring that request forward for a modification.
Thank you. It's also worth noting that site plan reviews aren't really permissive. We don't really have the ability to deny them. We just have the ability to impose terms and conditions on a site plan review. This is not specifically turning into the special permit process where the Planning Board does have the authority to deny.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion as far as Article 29? The chair sees none. All in favor of Article 29, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. You may lower your card. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And there is, there are two opposed, and Article 29 passes. At this point, having concluded the warrant, the-- Mr. Boudoir, are you all set? You are all set, sir? You're very welcome. Mr. Chairman, are you all set? All set. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. At this point in time, the chair is going to declare this town meeting adjourned at 9:38 PM. Thank you.